...portion of our city council meeting. We have been meeting since approximately 5:30 this evening. We had a workshop on disaster preparedness and had some excellent presentations and a list of items brought to our attention that we will be working on as a city. We then had our closed session that we just returned from and would like to ask the city manager if he would like to give any reports on that now, or did I say manager, city attorney? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item two on the city council agenda was a conference with real property negotiator regarding the property listed on the agenda. In that matter, the council met conferred with representatives of the city, gave direction. There's no final action report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. It's now time for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand with me for the invocation. Your father, we thank you for this opportunity to get together and discuss the issues that are before us and how to make this a better city and a better community for all. We ask that you give us your wisdom and how we handle the issues that are before us tonight. Thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we can stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This brings us to the portion of our agenda for oral reports. Any items that are not listed on the agenda? If they're on the agenda, please wait until those items do come to their respective agenda Had some feedback over the last number of meetings that in the interest of trying to be efficient and a fair at all, that we try and stick to our time limits a little more rigorously. We've traditionally been a little more informal, but I'm again just going to mention in general, unless there's extensive discussion and questioning, encourage everyone to stick to about a three-minute or less time limit for any items that you bring before the council. I will warn you again, if we go quite a bit over that, I may interrupt depending on how things are going. So just to be clear on that, I have one slip on oral reports, public participation, and that's from Dick Wiley. Please come forward and if there's anyone else, I will ask one more time after Mr. Wiley, but that's the only slip I have.
Mayor City Council, thank you. Want to take a few minutes to say a thank you and express some appreciations to the city manager, who was public works director at the time for Jarv Pepe, and the people down at the corp yard. I am impressed every time I come out Barton to look at the Rinmar Veterans Park. It's beautiful. It's a great asset coming into this town. They did an awful lot of work down there that we didn't see going on behind the scenes. The same is true with Heritage Park. That place looks nice now. And Jarv put this all together, put the people together. I know Brian Roger was down there watching the coal house get ready to move, moved it, got things in there, got the locomotive in there, was the project coordinator for a lot of that. A great job was done. If it wasn't for the staff down there doing this and Jarv's time and effort, it would have cost us a lot of money. And I am very pleased with what I see down there. I know things will be a lot better looking after this weekend, but I don't know if Jim Schiff told you. Also, that will be part of our history fair on May 16th. There's a little bit of a change that I think you should be aware of. We won't be at the Arco Station. They will all be at the fire station and up here at the senior center. And they're in the midst of construction down there, so Mr. Dodd said we can't do it right now. So that's a little bit of a change, but that on the 16th will be a part of our bicentennial down there from 3:00 to about 5:00. And it will really look sharp for the community to come and see. And I thank you for your time, effort for the group.
Thank you. Again, just to reemphasize, I think that is an important item, the history celebration that we have that Mr. Wiley mentioned coming up there in May. Is there a specific website or location or any phone number that anyone can call to get more information on that? Sorry for everybody on the spot, but toward the end of the meeting, maybe we'll make sure we share that with everyone unless you've got that handy now.
And we could put that on the website?
I was going to say, they can contact community development. We have all the brochures and flyers.
Okay. So community development is some information on the website, and that's coming up May 16th, correct? I think it'll be very interesting. All right, anyone else with a non-agendized item? See none, we'll move on to, everyone will deal with their conflicts as they may arise, and then on to our scheduled and related items. The first one is a presentation and proclamation related to Child Abuse Prevention Month, and would like to read and present this to Marlene Hagan. Is she with us this evening? Very good. If you could come to the podium, and I will read part of the proclamation, not every word of it, but obviously unfortunately, an important issue, especially all of us that work at the medical center unfortunately deal with these situations more than would like to like to if we had our choice. Anyway, proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2010, whereas in recognition of the right of all children to receive the care, protection, and guidance, a family provides and right to be free from harm and have physical, emotional, educational needs month met. The state and federal governments have proclaimed April 2009 as, anyway, we'll get these dates here, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and this is an ongoing designation to bring to our attention. You know, besides the medical center, the proclamation lists so many others that are involved, San Bernardino County Children's Services, social workers, Children's Assessment Center staff, law enforcement officers, educators, behavioral health clinicians, that are all very important as well as concerned citizens of the community. Whereas with the blue ribbon as the international symbol for child abuse prevention, all these many different organizations and government entities do designate this Child Abuse Prevention Month. Therefore, City of Loma Linda, on behalf of the entire community, do hereby proclaim April 2010 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the City of Loma Linda, on behalf of the city council, encourage citizens to participate in the events and to join in the efforts to end child abuse. So if I could present this proclamation to you, thank you for your efforts, and please share with us any comments that you have on this important issue.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors Office and Children and Family Services and all our partnering agencies, we'd like to thank the City of Loma Linda for being longtime supporters in this campaign and for promoting community responsibility for the safety, permanency, and well-being of the children in our community. I think our efforts have proven worthwhile. We have decreased the number of children in out-of-home care. We are currently under 4,000, and that's a great effort. Unfortunately, it's still a lot of kids, but we have often been over the 4,000 mark, and so it's nice to say that we are reducing those numbers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could come forward, please, I would love to present this to you. Item number four is a presentation of proclamation to Donate Life. Ambassador Dave Holland, if you would come to the podium, please, and I will again read excerpts of this. And this is proclamation Donate Life California Month, April 2010. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Whereas every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs in more than 100,000 individuals nationwide, more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. That's pretty staggering figures. Need for donated organs, especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. Whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the needs in California. 6,000 patients in need of volunteer marrow donors. Whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, and the donation of the tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others. Single blood donation can help three people in need. Whereas millions of lives each year are saved on behalf of those who donate organs and blood. Whereas the ability to sign up for the Donate Life California Registry when applying or renewing your driver's license has resulted in nearly 7 million Californians signing up for the state-authorized Donate Life Registry. I, as mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2010 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Loma Linda in recognition of one legacy's efforts to increase public awareness and enrollment efforts for the Donate Life California Organ and Tissue Donor Registry, and encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card signed 13th day of April 2010. If I could have you come forward, and I will present this proclamation, and then please share any comments with us after that.
I know that you folks on the council all have personal and professional connection to the university and/or the medical center. I feel in a different way, but a very strong connection in that nine years ago, due to diabetes, my kidneys failed. Six years ago, last Tuesday, my brother gave me one of his kidneys at Loma Linda University Medical Center. My brother saved my life. I was still diabetic, though, and my diabetes became a lot worse. And the good folks at Loma Linda listed me for a pancreas. And a little over four years ago, a young lady from Marietta who had registered as a donor aged 16, when she got her license, died in an accident, and I received her pancreas. And because I now have a pancreas that produces insulin, I'm a former diabetic. So certainly, due to the healing hand of God, the support of my family, the heroism of two people that made the courageous decision to give the gift of life, and also the wonderful staff and surgeons at Loma Linda University Medical Center, I can be here to talk to you tonight. I would like to recognize in particular Julie Hummiston, who is the Director of Referral Development at Loma Linda Transplant. She's here this evening. And Julie, again, thank you for being here, and myself and a lot of other folks appreciate all the good work that you folks do. Thank you. We would just like to ask everyone to consider registering as organ donors. There's a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding. The California, excuse me, the DonateLifeCalifornia.org website has a lot of good information. One of those misconceptions is that you have to go to the DMV to register as a donor. Most people do, but you can also register as a donor at DonateLifeCalifornia.org. We are very thankful for the city's support, and thank you and good night.
Thank you for, thank you so much for your personal experience and sharing with us that really brings to home how important this activity is. I think, you know, all of us in this community are involved in various ways, and we know about it, but till you, you know, see someone like yourself share it, it really helps bring it home. And again, really encourage individuals to talk about it with their families and do this kind of thing ahead of time when the issue is dealt with in the hospital in a very acute situation with tragic end-of-life discussions. You know, it's a tough time to do it, to say the least, and the more those discussions and decisions are made ahead of time, the more expedited that process can be, and the more organs saved. It's really important. The other quick one, I just can't help but mention, you know, I get blood quite a bit in my line of work, and it's almost a daily occurrence that end up giving blood that comes from out of state. We do not meet our blood needs in this part of California, and, you know, it's something that, thank goodness, other parts of the country seem to have ability to provide us that, but it's a critical need that we're really indebted on a lot of other parts of the country to meet our needs. Councilman Peterson?
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't go home unscathed if I didn't say something about this too, since one legacy is the organ procurement operation here in Southern California, and my daughter is in charge of two of those divisions, including the organ procurement division, and her husband, the other three. I hear the stories every day, and I'm proud to say, I believe that I was the first one in San Bernardino County to sign up online when it first came available as an organ donor. And if you have the little dot on your driver's license, which probably a lot of us do have on, even with that on there, in order to donate an organ, they have to get permission from the next of kin. I'm told that when I signed up online, when you sign up online, you don't even have to go through that. When they find your name on there, you automatically are an organ donor. And there's a huge need. I hear it every day from my daughter, there is a huge, huge need, and it's, this is one time when you can take a tragedy and turn it into a miracle, is donating an organ. There's always a tragedy on one side, but there's this incredible miracle on the other side, and I would just urge everybody to, like the mayor said, talk about it at home, get everybody to sign up, because it is so important, it saves so many lives. Again, thank you for you sharing your stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five on our agenda is one more proclamation, and this is proclamation related to Clinical Laboratory Scientist National Laboratory Week. And do I have Jasmine Colashia? I'm sorry, no, I said that. Thank you. If you could come forward, please, I'll just read parts of the proclamation. Clinical Laboratory Scientist National Laboratory Week, April 19th to 23, so coming up here very shortly. Whereas nationally recognized during the week of April 19th to 23 by the College of American Pathologists, the clinical scientists are those behind-the-scenes professionals performing thousands of types of medical laboratory tests that physicians rely on to diagnose and treat patients. Whereas clinical scientists are trained in various disciplines such as hematology, chemistry, immunochemistry, coagulopathy, blood banking, microbiology, and specialized other aspects of highly technical areas. Whereas 80 to 85% of all diagnoses, treatments, and therapy and monitoring depend on laboratory results. We are indebted to clinical scientists in the laboratory for their services. Whereas since opening in 1977, Jerry Alpetis VA Medical Center provides outstanding patient care and research, and recognize the dedication, commitment, tireless efforts of its clinical scientists. I, as mayor, do on behalf of the entire city council, join proclaiming April 19th to 23, 2010 Clinical Natural Clinical Laboratory Scientist National Laboratory Week, and urge all residents to join Loma Linda Jerry Alpetis Memorial VA Medical Center and take a moment to thank your laboratory professional recognizing their role in the healthcare process, not during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. If you could come forward, I'd like to present this proclamation, and then please feel free to address us.
On behalf of my colleagues in the laboratory at the Jerry Alpetis VA Hospital in Loma Linda, I would like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the citizens of Loma Linda for this heartfelt proclamation. We at the VA work diligently to provide the best possible care to our veterans who, without hesitation, put their life and limb on the line for all Americans. I would like to dedicate this proclamation to men and women of all armed forces. Thank you.
And I would like to also extend recognition to all the other laboratory national scientists that we have in this community, or especially highlighting the VA, but certainly the other hospital facilities, the work they do. A lot of times, certain physicians or especially surgeons may get more recognition than others, but none of their work is possible without the other professionals behind the scene, such as individuals that we recognize tonight that do the important work to allow the other processes to be carried on. Thank you all. All right, this brings us to the consent calendar. Is there any, I hear moved? Let's see if anything needed to be...
I have a question on item six.
Either questioned or polled, but not hearing anything to be polled, but a question on item six.
Yeah, the question is of the city attorney. There have been prosecutions of politicians in the area, Grand Terrace specifically, with regard to things like demands, register, payments to us, related or conflicted entities. And throughout these things, there are payments to Loma Linda University Medical Center and printing services and things like that. I know you're not a criminal defense attorney, but what do you think we should do about those items? Because at the end of each one says approved by the city council.
Well, if your question is, are there particular conflicts that we haven't discussed or been made aware of previously, we could take a look at those in the future, but typically on the consent calendar, if you feel you have a conflict of interest, you may decline to participate, and it doesn't require the formality of leaving the room.
What if there's no quorum?
Then it would probably go to the next meeting.
There wouldn't be straws. There may never be a quorum, because if it's Loma Linda University and we're subject to prosecution for just consenting to the consent calendar for those, then there would never be a quorum.
Can you designate straws when we have printing bills? So it wouldn't take a lot of time, because those are going to get approved, it's just we need to have some way of processing those.
Yes, you can always do that prospectively for any matters related to the future for that.
Yeah, I'm interested in abundance of caution, as you guys like to say.
True.
Because, you know, and in between meetings, there are, when we have long gaps between meetings, we have them just mailed to our house. And how do we deal with conflict on those? Because they're assumed, I guess you accumulate them for the next city council meeting, so then we could handle it during city councils if they're accumulated. But I'm just wondering, do we need to do something? Because it was a consent calendar, I believe, in Grand Terrace. It's...
That's right.
Well, we could enter into a longer-term arrangement for services that can be approved in advance, and that would, that would deal with the ongoing issue perhaps. We could certainly discuss that with the city manager and look at any particular items where there might be a concern, so we can deal with those on a long-term basis.
Sure, and every year we have a list of vendors that we do business with, and university is one of them, so if any of the, if any items that we deal with university on a list, we can bring it to the city council and as items.
Councilman Peterson?
What do we do today?
Well, is there a specific item there?
Oh, there are all the LLU-related entities in the list, and there are several pages that have those listed. And if we all, you know, if I declare a conflict, and then the other three declare a conflict, then we have to draw straws, and, you know, are we prepared to do that? Do we care, or does it?
Well, we can certainly do that if anybody declares conflict and we require participation out of the rule of necessity, we can do that tonight if you desire.
Well, I don't want to go to jail, I'm going to declare a conflict.
Well, that's a good, that's a very interesting point you brought up. You know, going way back, I guess we don't do it anymore, but, I mean, literally within the city budget that we voted on every year, in the past, in some past years, I know, it included benefits to city council, not city council, but maybe us too, I guess not, but benefits to city employees at the recent center, for example. Dear me. Voting on the city budget, would that have been a conflict?
That would not have been, because they're broad-based.
They're what?
I don't believe that would have been.
What if, well, for tonight, we separated out the part that is for the university or medical center, any affiliates, and just go ahead and draw straws, so we get around the conflict.
Or do you want to just postpone those items and approve the rest of the consent calendar?
We could go through and vote on each item separately.
Well, but the problem is, then they're not going to get paid, they're not going to get paid for the service. Seems like we ought to just separate it out, cross-straws, and vote on it.
But wasn't the issue in Grand Terrace, though, that the city council had literally voted to do something, and then the charges came on the consent calendar? I mean, there was a vote taken to actually do something, wasn't there?
I, you know, I didn't follow that case closely. I haven't seen it, I don't get the same newspapers, but I could certainly take a look at that and report back as to exactly what occurred there and make sure that we don't have a similar incident. I don't typically get the demands register myself, so I don't, I don't go through that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know the DA and know what his motivations are, but I don't feel safe.
It's a good question, although I guess... It's a good question, although I guess for tonight, my personal opinion is, I've done it so many dozens or hundreds of times, if somebody, if they chose to prosecute all of us, it's too late for that anyway. We need to take a look at that now that it's brought to our attention.
We all have two items, I'm sorry, we all have two items.
All right.
Well, there are two in each one of the subsets, and maybe the DA got a red light ticket, I don't know. Maybe the DA got a red light ticket in Loma Linda, and he's upset.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think Diana could shed some light on the issue.
Please, Diana.
The purchases that we have done through the medical center and the university are generally just, are generally just purchases for printing, and we've done those for years, just under contract, where we contract them to do business card printings and our envelopes with our logos on them, and that's been a pre-existing contract since, I think, almost the formation of the city. Also recently, we've, for a few years back, we start with our paramedics, they purchase medical supplies through the medical center, so those are mainly the purchases, and we also do mainly, one of the items may have been for, like, keys, if we rekey certain locks, the medical, the university has a shop that we can take those, so they're minimum purchases, they're not, and they've been contracts that we've kind of been doing with them for years.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, typically those small items that are within the pre-existing authority of staff to enter into those are contracts, they don't require separate action to approve the agreement, which is where the conflicts typically come in. You're simply approving your staff issuing the check for payment of an obligation that's already incurred, so it's not a separate agreement that's on the consent calendar that we're talking about that requires council approval.
I think that's what's a problem in Grand Terrace, it was a separate agreement.
Yes.
And we haven't even told the staff where to go to get this.
Can, can we get an advisory opinion from the DA's office?
Well, we could look into that further, they don't always issue advisory opinions.
Well, they're on the prowl, so I think they'd better do it this time.
Well, I think it's a good point, that we should scrutinize carefully any matters that are on your agenda for conflicts, and if you're not comfortable about a particular item, that's the time to bring it up, and we can look into it further. Question before us is, tonight, any particular item that you think we should consider a possible conflict now that issue's been brought up? I only saw, I think, a pharmacy item issue, pharmacy supplies, $17, and then there's a, was there some kind of printing, and there was a one other, or was it, I lost it, I should have marked it.
Well, there's a 318 list, page six, and there's the 48 list, page seven.
Blanket purchase on page seven. Anyway, Mr. City Attorney, any advice? Like I say, I guess based on my previous history, I am comfortable on going ahead with tonight with further review of this for future activity. Yes, I think you're in effect approving staff's actions rather than entering into an agreement that requires separate approval by the council, so it's, you're approving that they pay the money, not that they enter into the contract. The contract already exists and is binding, the debt is owed, so you're approving basically the check that it's going for lawful purpose. So we can take a closer look at any future items like that, but for now, I don't think there's a problem. Anyone, will it be safer to recuse themselves?
I'm going to recuse myself, just because I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the DA's office on specific things like this. I think other cities would appreciate getting the same information, because it's, you know, these little picky things. I go to, I go to sandbag meetings, and there are people who pick and choose conflicts, and they're, they've got staff who sit there and comb through to find where their conflicts are, and I, I just don't want to be on the bad side of that kind of analysis. So you say I don't have to leave?
I don't, listen up. Anyone else wish to recuse themselves? Otherwise, we have a consent calendar, it's been moved and seconded, with Mayor Protem recusing himself, a call for all those in favor of the consent calendar.
Aye.
Aye.
And so that carries four zero.
I had a question on item number 11. You're asking, you're asking us to go back and reopen the bidding, what are we budgeting for those particular canopies?
$150,000.
I see, so we're off by about $47,000.
Yes.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Actually, it's bids not bites. Number 11.
On to old business, item number 14, review of fire medical program. This has obviously been an item of interest, and Councilman Ziprick, I believe, asked to place us on here, and would also like to give our chief bender a chance to give any brief updates he might think are warranted, but we'll initially ask Councilman Ziprick to go ahead with this item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had prepared several questions, and actually presented them to Chief Bender on some operational and legal issues, and what is being done, he and other members of the staff are reviewing them, so we're going to not proceed further with that tonight.
Any brief updates, Chief Bender, on any further items, or would you prefer to wait for further updates till other items come back?
Aye. Probably a follow-up from our last meeting, when council asked us to certainly look at some other ways we communicate about the program and our utility billing, we're looking forward into those details also. Some of our initial PR materials on it, now that we've worked through the stock of that, working on a revised pamphlet that certainly emphasizes strictly the medical elements of our services versus, you know, certainly the whole global aspect of all the services we deliver, moving forward with those. Subscriptions to the program are standard approximately 500, trickling in of phone calls, which actually creates the opportunity to educate people pretty consistently when they call, since there's not, you know, a rush of multiple phone calls a day. Other than that, we move forward.
Thank you. And just to reemphasize, as you have in the past, the fees are for the medical component and medical services rendered, not for the 911 call or fire services, et cetera, there's, I think, some confusion on that.
Yes, and that's probably, thanks for bringing that up, since there was some statement, again, in the paper about, that had something to do with 911. The fact is, it's, the council's asked us to try to get reimbursement dollars when our staff deliver healthcare services.
Thank you.
So the costs are for delivering healthcare, not how you access our services or anything about that. You could certainly wave us down and say there's an accident, you know, two blocks down the street, that how you access the care doesn't, isn't an issue here, it's simply, it's a cost for that service.
Council Peterson.
I had one question that wasn't, that came up the other day in a conversation. I've signed up, and if I pay my, it's a yearly due, dues or whatever.
Subscription.
If I, subscription, if I pay my yearly subscription, and I have a paramedic service rendered, do you bill my insurance company on top of my subscription?
That's correct. Your insurance, your insurance is billed for the service. What's billed to the resident would be any gap in that coverage. Those residents whose insurance covers the entire amount, certainly a subscription would not be necessary. Your subscription really, whether you look at gap insurance, or what you would want to call it, how you'd look at that subscription, basically covers any, any out-of-pocket expense from our resident. Whether it was a copay or any portion of that, the insurance company doesn't cover, that would, certainly the city would not request any other, any out-of-pocket dollars from the patient or the resident.
Yeah, since, and you may, maybe you don't know the answer to this yet, since, I presume, there's quite a few people in this town, like I am, who have risk management, do they pay for this, or do we not know that?
We've encouraged everyone to ask their own insurance.
I see, okay.
I've gotten two answers to that, two different answers to that question. One was, yes, we would cover, just like the AMR ambulance, we cover that 100%, up to $10,000. Another answer I just heard today was questioning whether they would cover that, so we've encouraged certainly our residents to certainly inquire with their own insurance company and get that answer.
Okay, if I, again, if, if I have a call for paramedic, and my insurance pays the $300, I think it is, is that what it is, $300? If they pay, and I haven't subscribed, do I still owe something?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Our next item, item 15, red light camera agreement, another old-business item that we've had lots of discussion on, and we have Councilman Ziprick on looking at the two alternatives to this contract. Councilman Ziprick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been discussion, as everyone knows, for quite a few months on this issue, and we've informally had discussions as to where we were in terms of our respective positions. And in a recent meeting, it was suggested that, by some good colleagues, that we ought to terminate immediately. I know I've taken the position, I thought it should expire of its own terms in December, and I think the comment had been made back that probably my comment would not be believable, that I would actually then reverse my position and want to put the contract back in place if I happened to be on the council. Well, the best way to resolve that issue is to bring it to the council now, and go ahead and have that, have that vote, and put my colleagues' minds at rest. So I thought, well, the best thing to do is to have two issues for the council. One is the idea of terminating it immediately, and the other is to allow it to expire, but go ahead and give notice and take a vote that we will not renew it, and they're different alternatives, they both reach the same result, where a year from now, the contract would be gone, whichever path you go. My concern with the immediate termination isn't that I think we should keep the contract or keep Red Flex in place, but we have had a report from staff that we could be exposed to a half a million dollars or more. I think the comment has been made by some of my good colleagues, that there isn't really that substantial a risk of financial loss. I thought, well, if there really isn't a financial risk, then I think we'd probably, I could certainly see supporting that, but I hadn't really heard a reason why we should believe there is no risk. So I thought, well, it'd be fair to have that aired, and so the public could at least understand where we all are in, in terms of the red light camera contract. So with that, I don't care personally, Mr. Mayor, which item is taken first, but I would go on record as favoring of action to terminate it in December, at whatever date exactly it terminates, I'd understood December 1, 2010, and it's of natural course, which means there's no financial exposure, and staff has advised us, if we allow it to simply terminate, there's no exposure. We've also advised that if we were to be more precipitous and vote to immediately terminate it, or terminate it frankly, anytime before that, there could be an exposure of half a million or more, but I do believe my colleague, Mr. Papezku, and I, perhaps, Dr. Riggsby, believe otherwise. So I thought maybe that should be the, the point of discussion, but I think we should end up out of this meeting, going firmly on the record personally to give notice to Red Flex, that it will not be renewed in December, or at some time sooner. So I'll leave it there for point of introduction.
I have a slip from Mr. Swiger, so if you would like to come forward, please, and give us your three minutes' worth of wisdom.
Well, I was just really hoping to sit back and listen to the fun and games that take place before I made my comments, but I guess it's no secret that I'm in favor of the red light cameras, and it seems awfully strange that this is coming up at this point in time. It's obviously totally due to the election coming up, obviously. I mean, you have one person who's totally flipped from one position to another at this point. It's, it's...
Bob, were you going to tell your young driver to disregard what you're going to vote on? That it's okay to run this light?
No. But do you want me to address why I think, because I have addressed it before, why I believe that we ought to let the contract go? Have you heard my prior discussion on that?
Probably not.
Okay. If you want to make some comments, and then do you want me to respond, I'll be glad to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll sit down.
That's fine. When we initially voted to put the cameras in, the fines were much less, and there was a series of accidents that the mayor and others talked about. The course of four years has changed the type of accidents that have occurred, those are really not occurring anymore, and the types of people that are getting tickets are the ones going around right-hand turns, and I think you've heard that from my colleagues. And I've talked to quite a few citizens who have said they're getting tired of those types of tickets. It's quite a few people that have felt this way. They've also, there's also concern that the fines have been increased, and I think you probably are aware, being civically involved, that the state is tight financially and sees this as a revenue source for the state. So it has become an increasing burden over the last several years. And you're right, Kurt, there's a balancing, there's a balancing that goes on, and certainly, if you were on the council and you wished to campaign to put them back up, you could do that if you had support for it. But at this point, I think the, at least the majority, a very strong majority that I've talked to in the community have felt that it's run its course, and we'd be wise to let it go. And I have to either support keeping them or not keeping them, and I'm persuaded that it's, it's beginning to become something the community does not want to support, and I've talked to people who have, are prudent, they feel that those reasons are sufficient to not renew the contract. I have not talked to as many people who think we should get into a half million dollar exposure and immediately terminate them. They, I've talked to a number of people who like, who've told me they'd like to see them go, but they've said, please don't vote to put the city in financial hawk to that amount. But I have some good colleagues here, who you're well acquainted with also, who believe the exposure may not be that much, but I think they ought to speak for themselves on that point. But those are my reasons, no more complex than that, and the mayor himself, who supported them at the time we voted for them, brought out the two of the people, I believe, Mr. Mayor, that you'd spoken to, who had had T-bone accidents, one supported continuing the cameras, but one, I think you indicated, Mr. Mayor, indicated would like to see them go. So there's been discussion in the community on this issue, and we're not Solomon, we have to make a call, you either keep them or you don't, but it seems like the community consensus is, they've run their course, let's try it, and let's let them go.
Mr. Swiger, I'll give you one minute if you'd like to respond.
You know, I guess that's, it just comes down to, is what they're doing legal or Are we telling everybody in the community here that just go ahead and blow a red light? Who gives a shit? I mean, it's ridiculous. You see it every day, it just happens every day here, and yeah, it's gotten a lot better... And yeah, it's gotten a lot better, but you still have people blowing the right-hand turns. And that's what's gonna hit a pedestrian or somebody on a bicycle. You just see too many close calls, and it's, it's ridiculous. I mean, Ovi, last, the last time we spoke about this, you said there was somebody that was complaining because they got a ticket going to church, and then somebody got a ticket because they were going to the Dresden Center. So does that make them exempt? Because they're going to church or to the Dresden Center? I mean, that's ridiculous. They broke the law. They should, they should get a fine. Yeah, it may be exorbitant, but we don't set those prices. I mean, it's, it's just ridiculous, it's ludicrous that we're gonna tell everybody here that it's fine and dandy to run a red light or blow through one. And, you know, we just finished the budget review, and I don't recall seeing any place on the budget that stipulate a place for ignorant lawsuits. I would think that the city's history has proven that we've gotten ourselves into a lot of hot water and legal action, and I think we should stay the heck away from it.
Thank you. Further discussion from the council? Mayor Protim?
I think I've been fairly clear what my opinions are on red light cameras. I'm not in favor of civil disobedience on, on traffic laws, but I'm also not in favor of, of attempts to improve traffic safety that are proven to be ineffective and extremely expensive to our community. I think that if, if we wanted to do some kind of a safety improvement, there'd be a lot less expensive ways to do it than to extract, you know, over $10 million from our visitors and citizens for, for no noticeable improvement in safety. Other than that, I, I do, I do welcome the change of heart on the city council. I think it's better late than never. I think it's good that we're not going to be renewing the contract, and it doesn't sound like there's any support for anything other than that. I have never been in favor of spending half a million dollars to get out of the contract. I think, you know, like Ovi said, that's their first offer, and I think we could not necessarily vote immediate termination, I think that's an inappropriate choice. I think a better choice would be to investigate the actual cost of termination and not authorize until we hear what it is, and then if it's acceptable, we go with it. But I think immediate termination is something that's, that's, I think, a problem. I think that non-renewal is a fait accompli unless, unless some kind of faction rests control of the council after the election that's, that's very much in favor of them. I don't see that happening, but, you know, it's possible some people could change their minds, and that brings up another topic. If, let's say we vote not to renew, Mr. City Attorney, does that, does that bind future councils?
Well, the contract has a provision that requires notice of the intention not to renew. So once that notice is given pursuant to the contract, it would automatically terminate at the end of that period, which is around December 1st. A new council could always enter into a new agreement with Red Flex. But in order to renew the contract, there would have to be some action by the city council.
Any additional comments from council?
I was a, a very strong proponent of putting in the red light cameras, and I still think it's a good idea. I think the red light cameras are a very good idea. I do think that the fines have gotten totally out of hand. And there are some moves afoot within the state of California to try to get around that, whether it will happen, and I've already talked to our city attorney, but several cities, I understand, including Los Angeles, several cities are contemplating adopting as their city code, the state vehicle code. And instead of the state giving the tickets, the city gives the tickets, and they can set their own fines. And I think that if that would work, that would be something much more reasonable, because I think $450 for a rolling right turn is just ridiculous in terms of, I mean, the, the penalty doesn't fit the crime. And I agree with you, they're breaking the law, Kurt, there's no question about that. But $450 is just, that's, that's, instead of, instead of getting compliance, it's making people angry, and that's, it's not accomplishing what it needs to accomplish. One other point, Dusty had a good idea about lengthening the yellow lights for, is it one second?
Yeah.
And that has seemed across the country to partly solve some of the red light problems. However, I'm gonna predict something, and this is something that's been tried just recently, pretty much, that that will wear off, because what people now believe, there's a longer yellow light than which they expect to have, and so they stop. But as soon as they, as soon as we learn in the next few years that the yellow lights remain yellow longer, we're gonna be right back going through the yellow lights again, because that's our habit, is to drive through yellow lights. So we're stopping now and not getting caught in a red light, simply because they're longer than we expect them to be. That, that'll, I, I predict that'll change. Because when I, as I said before, when I grew up as, when I took my driving, when I did my driving as a kid at 14 years old, I could get my license at that time, you know, you were taught to stop when you see a yellow light, stop. But that's not what happens now, when you see a yellow light now, you speed up, totally different story. And so I, I don't, I don't think it's gonna last, but I, I, I do think the fines are getting way out of hand.
Well, if you look at the data nationally on yellow light lengthening, against the kind of logical conclusion that it would, it would eventually, that people would start breaking the laws again, most of the data have shown that it's a very durable improvement in violation reductions. So it's intuitive that people would start violating over time, but th- those data have not been shown yet. So it's a fairly durable thing, and that's why it's such a superior approach to traffic collision avoidance, to avoid the collisions rather than just photograph them as they occur.
There's one other, there's one other thing that, that may affect that, is that not every yellow light, or not every stoplight has the longer yellow light, only certain ones in our city. I don't think we've made every, every single light longer, at least across country it's not. So I think it's the ones where the cameras have been located. So, and, and if you take the entire United States and Canada and places like that, people are not gonna know if a particular light is going to be a second longer. I mean, you're, you're gonna know in your own talent eventually, but it isn't, I don't know, I, I kinda know which ones are, but I still am cautious with them, and, and maybe you're right, over 20 years, we'll all change our behavior, but, but there's still uncertainty when you see the yellow lights, so I still see people stopping. But anyway, that's before us, you know, tonight, you know, my thought is that we ought to go ahead and give the notice to Red Flex. It sounds like there's at least four of us that would be ready to do that, so I'd make the motion that we give notice to Red Flex that we are not renewing the contract. And I believe it's in December, but whatever date it is.
Before we entertain any motion, I would like to ask the city attorney whether, due to the implied threat of litigation with different courses of action, whether it would be prudent to have further discussion before we take a formal vote. We've had some discussions in the past, obviously, a situation is always fluid, but at least on the surface, I'm a little concerned with the potential threat of litigation, whether immediate action should be taken tonight based on that, and would like to ask your advice and input.
The, the contract, as I indicated, has a provision that states, if the city does not want to have the contract renewed, that we are required to give a, a written notice of that. And so if, if the council gives staff direction to give that normal notice, it is called for by the contract, that would not in any way be a violation of the contract or a breach of the contract. It's enforcing or following the terms of the contract, and therefore I don't think there's any exposure to litigation, simply by doing what the contract requires us to do, to go through the normal termination.
Are you comfortable with that action on this agenda tonight?
Yes, I, I think you could take an action directing staff to not renew the contract at its normal expiration, and to give notice of that pursuant to the agreement.
In fact, Mr. Mayor, I think if we don't give that notice, is this an evergreen contract?
Yes, it does have an automatic extension.
It, it will be renewed? Automatically?
Just trying to clarify and be as careful as we can, but with that advice, then it sounds to me that the action that's been moved is considered appropriate and prudent. And so we do have a motion to, as I understand it, notify Red Flex of non-renewal based on the date that the contract specifies for that option in December 2010.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have the contract in front of me at this moment, but if I recall correctly, it, it provides that within the last six months, the notice should be given. I think we may be a little bit premature at this point, but the direction would be to follow the terms of the agreement and give the notice at the appropriate time.
That's the intent of the motion. I'm thinking, obviously, if it's six months, I, I looked at it, but I didn't quite remember how long we could go in advance of the expiration date. And I know the expiration is based on when the cameras started to operate, and I don't know if we've exactly established it's December 1, or some other date. But I, I'd make the motion at the earliest legal date we give notice. And staff, do that.
City attorney's comfortable, who am I to say different? Do we have a second for that motion? I see certainly discussion...
That's not a second.
...discussion from Councilman Popescu.
Okay. In response to Kurt's comments earlier, you're right, we wanna make sure we don't put ourselves in legal jeopardy where we're spending money. The city has done a lot of stupid things that's cost us millions of dollars, no doubt about that. We don't wanna continue that trend. If you recall, back in September, Dusty and I made a motion for the staff to investigate termination of it. That motion failed, we never got the votes for that. So it wasn't, let's just get rid of the contract, let's see what we can do in order to do that. We never got to that point. Now, if I was Red Flex and I was watching in the audience, and you hear the bunch of council members are not gonna really terminate it, you're gonna give the biggest number you could possibly can to scare the heck out of them to make sure they're not terminated. Now, I happen to be one of the few council members who has talked to a lot of attorneys about this, and I can tell you that I believe there's some serious legal issues in the contract itself that would have allowed us to get out of it without the cost that Red Flex claimed we would have incurred. I happen to be the only one of that opinion, so be it, I wasn't, we couldn't move forward on that. At this point, the contract does expire in December, I don't see a need for us to attempt to terminate it early. However, I do have a serious problem with what we're doing, and I agree with you, this is very much political and there's an election coming up. This motion itself is meaningless. Those, those cameras are gonna go away, whether we do anything or not, they're gonna go away. We need to give them notice, I like to see the contract for myself to see how much of a notice we need to give them. Obviously, we're doing it before June 8th, so someone could put on the flyer, hey, I voted to remove the, to not to renew the contract. But that doesn't negate the fact that they've been in for five years, cost 30,000 tickets, they're over 30,000 tickets, adding to the tune of $12 million. That still doesn't put that behind us. The problem that I see with this motion is this. Number one, it's not needed. Number two, it's meaningless because the contract expires anyway, and I've yet to see for myself as to actually require council approval to give them notice. That notice may not require that we actually vote on it. But more importantly, I believe it's illegal for this very reason. We cannot bind the hands of future councils. It's like me making a motion, I want all of you to agree with me that for the next 10 years, I'm gonna give every firefighter a pay raise for 10%. And I want you all to vote on it now. They can't do that. Councils come and go, they change. You cannot bind the hands of other councils. Yeah, I can understand the motive behind it, you wanna tell the public that you're the one that doesn't wanna renew the contract. Well, you can do that, I, nothing prevents any of us talking to as many people as we can, but me voting on what you wanna tell the public doesn't make it any more powerful than you doing it yourself. I am still not sold on the idea that we have to have a vote right now not to renew the contract. My understanding from my discussion with staff is that there's no, there's no action needed for us to let the contract expire. Now I'm told that apparently we need to. At this point, I'm not sure what to believe. I don't believe we need to, to be honest with you, but I'm getting conflicting information. I would not vote for this, because I believe this is only done for political reasons, and it accomplishes absolutely nothing.
I guess I'm about the only one that hasn't weighed in, I'm gonna make it very brief. This is old business, we've been over this, and I've made my arguments till blue in the face, I'm not gonna repeat all those, I'm simply gonna move forward with whatever action we decide tonight, and spare everyone repeating the same arguments that we've had and discussions over and over. Anyway, the action that was on the table, I did hear an action moved for official non-renewal of the contract at its expiration date in December. Is there a second for such action?
Second.
Action's been moved and seconded, it is now up for clarification and further discussion.
Yeah. My comment is that politics are sometimes overrated and sometimes underrated. My feeling is that this contract was a bad idea from the beginning, I wasn't around when it was, when it was signed. I think the evidence against the effectiveness of these at improving traffic accident rates was pre-existent when the contract was signed. But nonetheless, like I said, better late than ever. I happen to think that political pressure to change people's minds, to do something else to save their political skins is a good thing. That's, you know, responding to citizen pressure is part of what politics is all about. So I don't decry the influence of politics on this vote. I'm happy, you know, this is my signature issue, I'm delighted, I've got, you know, 4.9 votes, I don't know, I'm not quite sure how Stan's gonna vote, but, you know, I, you know, politics does good things sometimes.
Further comments for the motion that's been proposed?
Just one thing, this vote, whatever happens, doesn't bind the hands of future councils, because future councils can make new contracts.
That's why I believe the motion is meaningless. Why do we make motions, just so we make proclamations, if we know that three months from now, someone can make a different motion? All we're doing is playing politics, that's all we're doing.
But that's the way it always is, Ovi.
Ovi, you could...
Any decision this council makes can be overridden by a future council.
Ovi, you could change, you could change your mind.
According to that law, we would never vote on anything.
You could decide you want red light cameras.
That doesn't make any sense.
To me, that's not the issue, the issue is...
It's the same issue as for anybody else.
No? Why don't I make a motion that we wanna do, balance the budget for five years? It, there, it's meaningless, it means nothing when you can, three months from now, do something completely different.
You heard the city attorney...
We pass laws in order to follow them, we just don't make proclamations so we can make the voters feel good.
Ovi, several, several months ago, I indicated where my position had changed. I did vote for the red light cameras almost five, about five years ago, and I've gone through and looked at it and read things, just like you, and I've become persuaded that at this point... persuaded that at this point, I don't think we should renew them. But it's sort of like you try to make the argument, and then if you convince some of us that that's something we ought to go with, then you attack us for accepting your argument. That seems illogical, too. I mean, this is, if this, if this is, Dusty's been talking to me about this for some time. Bob Prislin was opposed to them. We had a vote on it years ago. And, and, you know, you have one of those issues that could go, reasonable minds could go either way. But the problem I'm having where you're going is you're assuming, because I, like everybody else, have, has to run for reelection, that my vote is, is totally on politics, and yet some months ago, I'd already indicated my position had changed. Now, the problem I'm having is you're basically saying I do not have a sincere position, and then after June 8th, I would vote to put the red light cameras back in. I, I am saying that I'm not going to do that. I am taking a position, I think we should not renew the contract. I think we should come out, and because it's an evergreen contract, if you understand what that is, evergreen contract automatically renews on its own terms. And the city attorney's looked at it. His best understanding is it is an evergreen contract. Is that, best you understand it?
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but that's my best recollection that we do need to give a notice if we do not want to renew.
I'm just suggesting as soon as it's legal to do it. And I, by the way, I don't have a problem if, if the city wants to give an official notice in six months ahead, but start negotiating sooner. I actually had supported, I believe, the effort to approach Red Flex some months ago and ask if they would be willing to terminate early. I think there was a discussion on that. I supported that as my recollection goes at that time. But we got a report back from the city manager. As I understand it, Jarb, they were not interested in terminating early at that time. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So you've heard it, I've heard it. But there's nothing that says you can't approach Red Flex again and ask them if they'd be willing to terminate it early. That doesn't breach a contract, does it, Mr. Attorney? So we can do what Dusty suggested. I don't have a problem with that.
My main concern is, we could have given the Red Flex notice a long time ago. When residents come up to us and say, please, do something about this, we don't do them after five years of tickets and two months before an election. That's my issue. We could have given, if that, if we're just voting to give Red Flex notice, we should have voted that three years ago, four years ago. By the way, when this contract expires, we're going to be giving you notice. You can really possibly do that because we've had multiple elections. You don't know whether the council members are going to do.
Right.
So to me, it's a clear indication that I don't believe the motion has any merit other than trying to score political points. That's all it's trying to do. If you want, if you...
You'd like us to vote to keep the Red Flex cameras here. I understand your position because then you could take some shots. But we're not going there, so why don't you just accept the fact that everybody's pretty much, I think, agreeing that we're not going to renew the contract?
Once again, I don't want to repeat myself. I don't think we need to do that. The contract has expired. It's very clear, most people don't want it. Let it expire.
If it's an evergreen con, okay, an evergreen contract, it automatically renews, Ovi, if you don't give notice of termination. It, it will renew.
You could have given notice three years ago, four years ago, not two months before you get reelected.
No, you have to, the city attorney has said six months to the best of his recollection. So we're suggest, I'm suggesting that at the first legal date, we give the notice. And that would be around June 1.
Sounds like we need a three-minute rule for councilmen here, too. I'm going to make a quick comment and then ask for the vote if council's ready. I'm not going to get into whose motives or what. That's something everyone decides for themselves. But I will simply say I can't support voting for the action proposed because of hearing less than clear-cut understanding of what the contract actually says. Contract's not in front of the city attorney. We don't know the exact timeframe of the evergreen clauses, and I'm not going to vote for something that possibly could interpret, be interpreted in a fashion without knowing all that language. So, anyway, those are my final comments. Any other comments? Otherwise, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of the action that's been moved and seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
I abstain.
No. So I believe I heard Councilman Ziprick, Peterson, and Riggsby in favor. I was opposed. And Councilmember Papeskew abstained. Have that all, all correct, Madam Clerk? Okay, good. Councilman Peterson.
Just on, perfectly on this issue, I have thought for a long time, and I'm not a traffic engineer, that at least half of our stop signs ought to be removed and replaced with yield signs. I, I mean, just in terms of saving wear and tear on automobiles and gasoline and all sorts of stuff, it seemed that we had to make much more use of yield signs, and we don't seem to be able to do that for some reason. I don't know why, but...
Floyd, Floyd, they should do that in Redlands. They'd have to change the, the name of the town to Yellowlands.
All right. Any further discussion on item 15? Are we ready to move on to item 16? Seeing no further discussion, new business, item 16, a review of all the city fee schedule. And Mayor Protim has put this on the agenda, so please lead the way.
I intended this item to be a companion item to number 14, review of the fire medical program. There's, it is an election year, and there's a lot of vitriol flying about. I recently, maybe this can be a report of councilman, too. I recently was interviewed by Good Morning America about this issue, and it seems like the press is intent on indicting cities that have paramedic fee programs. And their angles seem to be consistent, that you're charging people for calling 911, or you're doing this to gouge your citizens during a hard economic time. And when I, when I am interviewed for these things, I, I keep pointing out, the reason we did this program, the fire medical program, is because we don't really believe that individual health care is the general obligation of the taxpayers, and that it's more appropriate to have a user fee for specific health care. And by doing that, what we're doing is replenishing the funds spent out of the general fund that shouldn't be spent for that kind of thing. And it's, there are bloggers and, and comment, commentators, and the program in Chicago Heights ended up on the Drudge Report, and I believe that's what prompted Good Morning America to be interested because the national press don't seem to do anything unless it's on the Drudge Report first. And the angle that they gave me, and I, whenever I'm being interviewed, I always ask the reporters, what's your angle? What are you looking for? And his angle was a lot, the one that I mentioned. He was in favor of, you know, he was basically saying, we're trying to show that cities in hard times raise fees and, and take advantage of whatever angles and leverage they've got to, to extract more money from their citizens. And I said, I'm not going to be able to support your, your angle on that story. And he kept redirecting the questions to try to get me to say that that's what we were doing. And, you know, to me, there's a difference between a tax and a user fee. There's a big difference, and I already mentioned. And the analogy that I use is, if we pave a street, everybody pays through general broad taxation because everybody benefits from the streets. But if we chose to pave your driveway to your house, you should pay for that and not have the city pay for it, not have other citizens pay for it. And to my mind, individual health care expenditures like this, or delivering health care to individuals, is more analogous to paving their driveway than it is to paving the city streets. So I believe that should go in the direction of a user fee. So I decided, let's look at our other user fees. We've got lots of user fees in town. You use water. Some people use a lot, some people don't use much. Some people have big nozzles to their house, some people have small nozzles. We charge different amounts for different usage. There's differential utilization of services. Is anybody proposing that we pass a general tax for water and stop charging for use-dependent user fees for water? I don't think so. How about sewer? How about trash? Should we just say, okay, why are we charging you for trash services? You're already paying your taxes. Why don't you get free trash pickup? How about permits? You know, I just recently built a house. I spent a lot of money on permits. Boy, I would have liked it if all of you had to pay higher taxes so that I would have a very, a zero permit fee. I already paid my taxes. Why should I pay a permit fee? Well, it's because I am personally consuming a lot of time for inspectors, planners, and engineers, and people to actually look at my project. We have impact fees for developers. We have the Connected Community Program. I pay $30 a month for that. I already paid my taxes. Why, why am I paying that $30 for that program? Well, it's because I'm using it and you're not. So what, I'm trying to figure out how we as a community should philosophically set up our fee structure. Because the truth of the matter is, if we decided to convert any of these to general taxation, and as you know, under Prop 13, we can't raise taxes except by direct vote of the people. If we changed it to general taxation, something else that we do would have to not happen anymore. So how much do we spend on, on trash? What's the trash contract per year? $6 million? $3 million?
It's the second highest one next to the fire department.
3.6.
3.6 million. So let's say we just suddenly responded to this, this consumer outrage over fees and converted that to general taxation. We'd have to cut city general fund expenditures by 24% to cover that. What would not happen if we cut our budget 24%? Yeah, fire and, and fire and police consume about, what, 55% of the budget or, yeah, 55%? So we'd only, we would consume, we would, we would cut more than half of the non-safety, safety-related expenditures for the city. You know, we can do that if that's what everybody wants. But I don't think that's what people want. I think people, I think there are certain services we supply. And Loma Linda is a town, is uniquely placed in the inland empire. We haven't had massive growth that's collapsed on us, you know? We didn't get lured into spending a whole bunch of money because we had all this tax revenue and then have it all taken away from us. We're pretty, we're pretty good positioned now. We're looking at passing a, a balanced budget for the next year without a lot of pain. There's a lot of tightening, but not a lot of pain. And I just don't see why people are so upset about a user fee when what we're trying to do is protect the taxpayers from, from a government that oversteps its bounds and spends money on individuals at the expense of the general taxpayer. So that's my comment about the program. To me, the fire medical program is a user fee because it is individual health expenditure. And yeah, some people can say, well, I didn't want it. But let's face it, the reason we have a paramedic program is because the current system for emergency medical services does not respond quickly enough for life-threatening medical emergencies. It does not in the absence of having a local, immediately present, and highly trained staff of paramedics. And in our case, the most efficient way to do that is through our fire department. I don't see any way to get by without it. And my personal political philosophy is that government should provide general services under general taxes, and individual services should be paid by user fees. So I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but maybe it's just a big soliloquy.
Any comments from the rest of the council? Only comment I would have, certainly, all city fee schedules, since it's listed as that on the agenda, are reviewed periodically to match the costs of those services, and certainly, medical service fees will be no exception to that rule as time moves forward. If there's no other discussion, Councilman Peterson?
Just one really quick. A couple of weeks ago, I, as I usually do every year, go to Washington for a couple of days with Omnitrans to lobby Congress for transportation dollars. And there is a, you know, user fees, there's a very strong move afoot, suggestions now to create or supplant transportation money with a miles per driven tax. So people who drive more pay more, people who drive less pay less.
Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry. That there's a, there's a strong move afoot to, or a strong push from some quarters to institute or supplant what we now get for transportation money with a miles per driven tax. So the people who drive more pay more, people who drive less pay less, and that would be more of a user fee than a, than a, as you were mentioning.
Well, that's, that's already the case with the gas tax.
Of course, it is with the gas tax, yeah.
So it's a little worrisome when people can't hear me, but they're not too concerned, so I don't hear them asking me to speak up. Okay, any, any further comments on that? If not, let's move on to item 17. Item 17 is designating delegate and alternate for the Southern California Association of Government meeting coming up in May in La Quinta. Anyone planning to attend?
It's nice out there this time of year.
Not seen. Our city manager will be going?
Either me or, or can Conrad, one of the two of us, we can go.
We'll designate whoever of you goes to be our delegate, and if both of you happen to go, I guess...
Or just be one of us.
Okay, then that's all the action we need to take, unless there's any other. We'll let you handle that between you, but unless there's any other comments from council, it will be whichever one of you are designated, and leave that to the city manager. Reports of councilmen.
I just have a brief comment announcement, wherever you want to look at. As many of you know, I've been one of the huge proponents, and I'm sure everybody agrees with me, I'm not the only one, that we're trying to spend as much money as we can here in Loma Linda. Obviously, the more money we spend in Loma Linda, the more money we keep as far as taxes. So I make it a habit, I know it's kind of weird, as my gas gets lower and lower, I make sure I time it that I always fill up in Loma Linda. And I think the reason that's important people don't realize is we actually get quite a bit of monies from the gas tax that gets put right back into our city budget in order for it to pay for the roads. Having said that, one of the things that we always want to do is, obviously, we buy goods and services, but I recently, I am very proud owner of a new iPad, and I bought it, gosh, almost a week and a half ago. And many of you may think that you could only buy this online or at the Apple Store. Well, this iPad you can buy here in Loma Linda, and you can buy it at the bookstore at Loma Linda. Not only does it benefit us because we get the sales tax, it benefits our institution, and we all want to make sure they thrive and prosper. So I want to encourage any of you who might consider buying an iPad, you can buy it here in Loma Linda. And that was it.
Other reports of councilmen?
Is there, are we, these items? Oh, you're on that. We're still in the city.
I just had two quick ones, and I will add, I was just noticing, seems like, forget to comment on it, and a lot of folks are unaware, there's really some excellent artwork that gets hung in the hallways of City Hall that some of our art societies and so forth help coordinate. Please, any of you that have an interest in that, come down to City Hall, walk down the hallways. Every couple of weeks, there's new exhibits, everything from paintings to photographs to showing my lack of art knowledge, but some other forms of artistic display that are there, and some of them for sale. And I've even bought one of them myself, and it's... myself. And it's, it's really a, a great thing. So, please, look, look in the hallways. The second item, just want to comment on, I, on behalf of the city council sent Los Angeles Airport Commission a letter about six weeks ago, expressing our concern for the constant secondhand smoke exposure every time you walk into the terminal at Ontario. I just got a letter on my desk back from them thanking us for our letter, saying they only designated smoking is on the east and west end of the out, the exterior of the terminal. And there should not be any smoking in any common travel pathways, and that will be enforced. Well, just happened to drop someone off at Ontario this morning, walked to the doors, people sitting on the benches, smoking again this morning. I encourage all of you, you know, go on their website, drop a line, say, you know, "All smoking should be prohibited in front of the terminal where people have to walk and congregate. It should be clearly removed from any area that just walking in and out of the terminal exposes you to secondhand smoke." It's, I just think unacceptable. And their letter, you know, I, I still don't think is a acceptable answer. And so, please, go on the website, express your concern with the health and just general nuisance of that issue. And we'll keep bugging them as well. All right, reports of officers? Seeing none, I believe. City council meeting is adjourned.
And we'll call the redevelopment agency to order. We have, the roll call's already been done. Items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any oral reports or public participation on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we go to the minutes of February 23?
Move them.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any opposition? Seeing none. Number two, Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Report?
Move.
Was there a second?
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion, any opposition? Seeing none, that's approved. Item number three, CRA bill R-2010-03, authorizing purchase of 10934 Cabrio Loop. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a single-family home within the Parkside tract, the Gardner Construction project of several years ago. This home has been offered to the agency due to the death of the owner. And the family members wish to sell it. They have agreed on our price and would like a short escrow. The home is in very excellent shape. There is very little we have to do to resell. And I do have prospective buyers. This would also protect the covenant, and the new covenant term would comply with state law for 45 years.
I'll move the item. Council Bill 2010-03.
Agreed.
Not a council bill, CRA bill.
Yeah, CRA bill, yeah.
Move, second.
Okay, any discussion? Is there any opposition? Seeing none, we go to item four, 2010-04, Portola Loop.
On the-
I'll second it. Okay. What were the circumstances?
On the Portola Loop property, this property apparently went into foreclosure. We were not notified because the original owner had already paid the agency loan. It became owned by an investment group. And we learned of it through, through that realm. And they have agreed to sell it to us. They were going to use it as a rental. And when they found about, found out about the CCNRs, which prohibited rentals, they did offer it to the agency at a very good price. And it, as well, has been refurbished. So, this, again, would retain the covenant.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Any opposition? Seeing none, that's approved. Item number five, application for county home funds pertaining to development of five and a half acres on the west side of Poplar Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just to inform the, the board member that the staff have been working with the Corporation Better Housing and, and the County of San Bernardino to apply for a $2 million home fund. The proposed project is for 152-unit senior apartment on the five and a half acre on Poplar Street, kind of across from our 20-unit apartment projects. Again, this is just to submit the application. The project still had to come back to the city council and, and the board, really, for, for an approval and review and approval. And the same thing, we go through the planning process and so forth. If this project is approved, the city will, will be in a good position as, as, in term of the, we meet our requirement, as a matter of fact, will exceed the, the requirement for our low and very low-income affordable housing.
I had a quick question, and I might have missed it in the report. But, what is the RDA's obligation towards this project as far as cost?
Right now, it's nothing.
But, if we move forward-
But, if we move forward, then it's in the staff report, is, is $1 million.
Okay.
And also, we pay for the, the fee, the permit, yes.
Okay, we, okay.
And then we lease the, the land to the Corporation Better Housing.
I guess this may be a good time to just remind some of those who may not know that we just had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a similar project across the street. And it was, we were very, very impressed and very happy to see the quality of work that was done there. And not only do we fulfill some of our obligations, but I think we're providing some excellent housing for some of those people who need it most. One of the way, one of the things that we did recently is, we're in the process of building another 120-unit project next to it. And part of the reason we were able to do that is because we did get similar funds from the county. And we really want to express our appreciation to the county for doing that, because without the $2 million for that project, we couldn't move forward with that. And I think that area, if any of you are familiar with it, has been pretty run down for quite a while. And if you see this beautiful building smack in the middle of the neighborhood, it just completely changes it. And adding more, something similar to it, is going to continue to improve the area. And I, I'm hoping that the county will move forward and hopefully get funds for this other senior housing project, because that's another area that we definitely have a deficit in.
That area was hit pretty hard by the flood of 1969. And it, it never really, probably had fully recovered.
Go ahead.
This was just a informational item?
Yes, sir. Okay, it's information.
I, too, wanted to comment on the, on the wonderful project that we cut the ribbon on. It certainly is going to do a lot for that neighborhood and provide some much-needed housing. But, I couldn't help but recall all the work that's been done on that project for the last number of years. The project that was originally designed there included the current building, pretty much the current building the way it is, with the forty-some, 42, or whatever units had around there. We now have planned next to that building some more apartments. And I think it's important for us to remember that the rest of that land was not originally planned for apartments. It was planned for single-family houses on the rest of the land on the south side of that, on the east side of that street. We planned single-family houses there for moderate income. We have now replaced those single-family houses with apartments, mainly because of Measure V. We couldn't, we cannot now, although even if we wanted to, we could not put single-family houses on there because of the lot size restrictions from Measure V. And so, now, instead of houses, we will have apartments. I think that the public needs to, to, to realize what we've done when we passed Measure V, that we can now replace single-family houses with apartments.
Having been involved with Measure V, I can tell you that is absolutely not true. The issue of putting in single-family housing has nothing to do with Measure V. It has to do with economies. You cannot build affordable, single-family houses in this economy. It's impossible. We have asked our attorney. The, the idea that somehow Measure V is forcing us to put in apartments there is absolutely false.
When we get to reports on other items, I had something.
Okay. Then I think we're done with item five. Go ahead.
Only other thing under reports, as long as we're bringing up and trying to analyze any possible conflicts of interest. I have heard at a previous League of California City meeting I was at, a question brought up, if someone's a member of Chamber of Commerce and then is in the position to approve funding that Chamber of Commerce with funds, is that potentially a conflict of interest? So, as long as we're looking at every angle of issues that may arise, just like to ask the city attorney to also give us advisement on that.
Say that again?
If you are, you, a member of an organization, in this case, it's, it's Chamber of Commerce, could be the medical center, could be a business, whatever, but you're voting funds to give to that organization to fund them, is there an economic benefit to you?
If I'm a chamber member?
Or a member of any organization, be it a chamber, be it a business, whatever.
Well, see, I brought that, I brought that same issue up a while ago, and was pretty much shot down here over the fact of voting to approve a plan for the university church, of which I'm a member and I make considerable contributions to, and which I receive benefits from. And, and, and that, that was another issue that concerned me.
Typically, the Political Reform Act deals with a source of income or a financial interest that you have in another business or entity. And in the case of, of membership in a church, unless you are the pastor at the church and you have a source of income there, or you're on their payroll in some fashion, that would not seem to apply. Same with the Chamber of Commerce. Membership in and of itself in a nonprofit would not represent a financial interest or a source of income. Good.
Any other items? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.